All right, we're at 7:10, so we're going to move ahead and call to order. The April 8th, 2021 meeting of the Abington Township Board of Commissioners Committee of the Whole. Our first order of business this evening is to consider a motion to approve the minutes from the Board of Commissioners Committee of the Whole Meeting of March 11, 2021. Do I have a motion?
Moved.
And is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from the members of the committee about the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Hi.
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 Any opposed? Minutes are approved, thank you. We do not have any presentations this evening, and so we will move forward to public comments on agenda items, and so we'll open it up to the audience if they have comments to make about this evening's agenda. Now is the time to do so.
Commissioner Hecker.
Yes, Mr. Manfredi.
To address any items on the agenda before you began?
I was going to ask you whether you wanted to do it before or after public comment, I suppose.
If it's okay with you, I think it'd be more appropriate for before public comment.
I'm certainly okay with that, so we'll move to public comment after Mr. Manager Manfredi has a moment.
Thank you, sir. Just a few items for board consideration on the agenda and one announcement to make that I think is germane to the discussions from the previous meeting and this one. So on this agenda this evening, after talking with Commissioner Hecker and Commissioner Thompson in particular, as it relates to land use, and Commissioner Hecker with respect to the Committee of the Whole, which incidentally, the Board of Commissioners, as you know, is a committee in this format. That's why it says Board of Commissioners. But with respect to the item A, under the Board of Commissioners with the Township Existing Conditions Assessment, that is on the agenda as an announcement, there is no action necessary to be taken this evening. There is no information received because we have not received any proposals yet. If those proposals exceed the authority granted to the manager in authorizing a professional service, they will then be scheduled for your regular business meeting on May 13th, and any and all information will be provided before you vote that evening. You do have the proposal, the RFP that went out, which sets forth the scope of services and the timeline that will be followed for review of those proposals. I also just want to remind everyone that existing conditions assessment is just that. It is not the process by which an architect selected to build anything new. This is literally an assessment of the existing conditions, including spatial analysis of the various structures that are identified in the RFP. The other item that is on the agenda this evening that does not require any action that would be is here because it's the necessary step to get to the next meeting, or the bids received and that were opened on March 31st for the engineered retaining wall system, the source, sort, inlets, and manhole structures, radiant concrete and super paved materials. That was a public bid process. The results of the bid are what they are. Mr. Jones will be going into detail at the May 13th meeting. Again, this is here for your information. If you had any questions, he is here to answer them. But there is no motion required this evening because that must be done at a public meeting in our rules of procedure. In essence, require that to be at the May meeting, so there's no action necessary. This will automatically move to the May 13th meeting. The other items I want to address is the Land Use Committee. In consultation with Mr. Thompson, who chairs that committee, item B, the ABP Investments Incorporated for Property Located at 1051, 1053, that item will be heard this evening, the presentation by the property owner, and you will consider it as information to be heard. But items A, C, D, and E have been requested by Mr. Thompson that he will be making a motion for those to go to the Land Use Committee because he thinks that there are comments that need to be reviewed by the committee as well as the full board, and he thinks that it would be a better vetting at the Land Use Committee and give the public time on each item at the Land Use Committee to make comments on those, and and that includes the Holy Redeemer System. We do not believe that in items D and E as it relates to Holy Redeemer Health System and the Sisters of the Holy Redeemer that moving it to the committee prior to the May 13th will add any time or cost the, those applicants anytime because they have to go to the zoning hearing board anyway. So with that said, I expect that when we get to those items, Mr. Vice President, that Commissioner Thompson will be making a motion that items A, C, D, and E go immediately to the Land Use Committee, and item B would be heard. With that, sir, there's like one other announcement I wanted to make, and and as you know, probably would have been more appropriate at the previous meeting, given some of the comments that were made. It's important for everyone to know and understand that the Board of Commissioners does in fact hear people's comments. They do in fact want to hear what people say, and it was in fact the intent of adding this additional meeting of the Committee of the Whole for more transparency and more public input. Given the comments that have come from commissioners and others, I have, I will be working on recommendations to the rules of procedure, including public comment, and we'll have recommendations for you at the, at the May Committee of the Whole Meeting for consideration that will address rules of procedure and all these things that were that you have brought to me of concerns you may have. And with that said, I think that may help this meeting. Certainly, there'll be several items that will have more comment at the Land Use Committee as well. So I turn it back to you, Vice President Hecker.
Thank you, Manager Manfredi, and with that, we will move on to public comment on agenda items. And I see we have one hand raised. If you could let them in.
Ms. Han, on your own, you didn't.
Hi, President Spiegelman, can you hear me? I hope so.
Yes, hello, Ms. Han. It's actually Vice President Hecker who's chairing this meeting, but we do all hear you. Hello, Ms. Han.
Oh, thank you. You'd have to forgive me. It's been a while since we discussed Dave's backyard farm, but that's what I'm calling on. It's new business item B that stated. Um, I just wanted to make a few quick comments about that, and again, I was only notified of this meeting yesterday. So it's the very last minute, and I'm trying to provide as much information as I can to our community. So first, I really wish the Hamelins or anyone who lives in our community and is involved with these procedures would have reached out to us, considering how involved we were in the past. And I think the community's opinion seems to be ignored because we're not getting the information, and that's one of my biggest concerns. Everything seems to be done very secretly. So I'm trying to wrap my head around this action item that you guys listen, and I need to explain it to my neighbors. So from last year, the Hamelins violated a prior permit which stated they could not sell from their property. Dave sold beer from his garage. He held weekly farmer's market with cars lined up and down the street, and the township was unable to enforce any regulations. No fines or penalties were ever collected, and I think they're being waived now. There were actually no consequences to any of his prior actions. So with this item you listed, I find it so hard to think that someone would would think that he would honor another legal agreement when he hasn't in the past. Um, his business plan for his operation states, while we currently grow vegetables on one backyard, we intend to lease multiple yards in the Huntington Valley area. So this is just the beginning. That means the neighbor to the right of me could start a commercial farm. Your neighbor could start a commercial farm with chickens and animals. So it just seemed so vague, and I need more information. From what I was provided, the agreement makes no mention of the Right to Farm Act, which protects farmers from nuisance lawsuits. So will the Hamelins residential backyard be protected by this act? Um, I know David previously planned to use this act to defend what he was doing. So if he's granted a variance, what would stop him from using that again in the future? Um, I am really asking for more information for this. Um, and right now with the information I already provided to the neighborhood, everyone feels like there's no option but to oppose it, any agreement, any variances, because we're not provided any, any honest information about what's going to happen for the future.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, and I'm actually going to turn this over briefly to Manager Manfredi to address some of what you've said.
Thank you, Vice President Hecker. First, as it relates to as it relates to the information on the agenda, I think as the board knows that anytime there is a legal settlement agreement, we do not publish that legal settlement agreement until the board actually acts upon it. That's why it's not attached to, to this agenda for the public information. The Committee of the Whole process, the only action that will be taken this evening on that will be a brief presentation, since you've already had it to review, but for the public's benefit, will be a brief presentation on the bullet points of what the agreement does and an executive summary, so the public understands what's contained in it. Your vote this evening will be to decide whether or not you should move that forward for another review and full consideration at the May 13th meeting. So there is actually an additional step in this process, and that step is this step. This step is, it gets presented to the public. The board can discuss it. You can decide if you want to move it forward or not. And then there is another opportunity for the public to actually comment on that agreement once it's presented to you and reviewed. So I just want everyone to understand that this is an additional step in the process, that this is just being presented to you, and that the reason it's not out there for everyone to read in advance is because you haven't decided what to do with it yet, and you are going to decide that this evening. With that, Vice President Hecker, I would turn it over to Solicitor Gallagher, who can talk about, if you so wish, can talk about the executive summary and highlights of that agreement.
Commissioner Hecker, would you like me to address that at this time?
Yes, thank you very much.
Certainly. So as the, the board is aware, we have been working on a resolution for this matter, and the agreement, if the board is inclined to approve it, would do a variety of things. So stop me if you have any questions. Otherwise, I'll run through them. We can discuss at the end. The zoning hearing board hearing, which has not yet been scheduled, will move forward on the variance issue only. The notices of violation will be held. The validity challenge will be held. The township would not oppose the variance. If the variance is granted, the township will withdraw the notices of violation at the expiration of the 30-day appeal period, or if the matter is appealed when the appeal is decided in the applicant's favor. If the variance is granted, the applicant will withdraw the validity challenge at the expiration of the 30-day appeal period, or if the matter is appealed when the appeal is decided in the applicant's favor. If the variance is granted, the township and applicant will execute an agreement indicating that the applicant cannot operate the farmer's market from that property at the expiration of the 30-day appeal period, or if the matter is appealed when the, then when the appeal is decided in the applicant's favor. If the variance is denied by the zoning hearing board or overturned on appeal, the applicant can then proceed with the validity challenge. If the variance is denied by the zoning hearing board or overturned on appeal, the township can proceed with the notices of violation. The applicant will be not, will not be charged a separate filing fee for the variance and validity challenge. If the variance is granted, the applicant agrees that he will not expand the area that is being tilled and that he will abide by all township noise ordinances. And if the variance is granted, the use will be abandoned upon transfer of the property from the current owners to any person other than David Hamalian or David Hamalian and spouse slash significant other or relative. But that covers the, the essential terms of the agreement, so I'm happy to answer any questions.
So Manager Manfredi, I wonder whether we should do the questions here or wait till we actually get to the agenda item and proceed with public comment. What do you recommend?
I think if there are questions of Ms. Gallagher, I think that would be appropriate. Whatever it takes for you to feel comfortable in deciding whether or not you want to move it forward for, for a vote or, or discuss it again in executive session before you do so on, on May 13th.
Okay. Well, with that, then I will ask, before we move on to further public comment, whether there are questions from my colleagues on the committee for Solicitor Gallagher?
Commissioner Hecker?
Yes.
I am actually back on the call.
Yes, Commissioner Brodsky.
I, for personal reasons, needed to step away for a few moments, but I'm back on the call, so if you could just give me the very brief status of where we're at procedurally and nature of the status of where we're at.
We are in the public comment section, and some comments were raised about agenda item B under new business for the Board of Commissioners, and Manager Manfredi and Solicitor Gallagher were seeking to address the comments and questions raised by Ms. Hanam.
Understood. So I would suggest that since I did not have the opportunity to hear the actual public comments, I'd like to get, copy that transcript or at least see notes of this before I can respond to those comments, because I'm certain there are certain things I would probably want to comment on, but the agenda item itself, if we're not up to that yet, then I'll reserve comment on that specific issue.
Yeah, we can certainly turn to you, Commissioner Brodsky, when we get to that agenda item, item B.
Sure. Yeah, I'd like, I would like the opportunity to reserve the opportunity to, I want to reserve the opportunity to actually comment on the public comment, but I will not do that until I actually hear the nature of the public comment and what was or was not stated. Comments that were made, if that's permissible.
Yes.
Okay.
Commissioner Bowman, I see you have your hand up.
Yeah, while we're, have Lauren commenting on it, I think in a general sense, just to respond to the citizens', you know, general sense of things, I think, Lauren, it's safe to say that we have discovered in this process that this family has some pre-existing rights in this matter. Is that correct?
Well, they had, the, the violation, notice of violation that was issued relates to the use in the farmer's market. While we were investigating that, we discovered that the property was being used to grow vegetables, and the property owner raised the defense of the Rights to Farm Act, indicating that he was permitted to do both the farming and the the farmer's market under that act. That's kind of where things got to. Um, and this, and you know, again, there was notice of the violation issued. There were there were zoning appeals filed, and this is kind of where, where everything is.
I, I, I think just by way of what she said about if your neighbor, this property was somewhat unique, wasn't it? Didn't it have some prior history?
Well, any, any variance that would, so if there was a variance granted, it would only apply to this property, not necessarily apply to any other property.
That's fine, okay.
Other questions for Solicitor Gallagher before we move on to further public comment? All right, can we let the next resident in for public comment, please?
You're on, you didn't, Natalie.
Oh, thank you, please. This kind of actually would pertain at this point to the backyard farm, but also in general. The terms of agreement that Solicitor Gallagher expressed are pretty extensive, and I think it would be fair for the residents to either have a transcript of that or the ability of seeing it either online. There's a lot in that, in those terms of agreement, and it's, it's a pretty complex situation, and I think especially the residents in that ward. Yeah, I'm sure would want to see the details of everything that was laid out, which brings me to a comment that I wanted to make in general. There was a time where on the agenda items, at the end, there was descriptions for various agenda items, and the public would have a better idea of what that agenda item actually involves. I don't know what happened, but that, I don't see that anymore. Frankly, I wasn't even sure that the backyard farm was part of the agenda tonight unless there's like certain codes that everybody's used to seeing. In other words, the agenda items are not clear the way they are written out, and I guess that's why there were descriptions in the past at the end of the listed agenda items for somebody to read in detail what everything's about. So I don't know what happened with that. That needs to come back, especially in, in this challenging format. We don't always know what everything means on this, on this agenda, and I, again, please, please return that for, for transparency. And speaking of transparency, I appreciate Dr. Manfredi, Dr., excuse me, Mr. Manfredi's comments about transparency and creating the meeting, the Committee of the Whole, and, and willingness to hear residents. And to me, unfortunately, that just sounds like lip service because a lot of our time has been reduced.
Mr. Stick, I'm going to remind you that this comment period is about agenda items only, and so I ask you to keep your comments to the matters before the Committee of the Whole this evening.
Well, this is about Committee of the Whole, and frankly, this would affect every agenda item, because if we don't have time to talk about it, every agenda item is affected. So I think that the transparency is not there if, if our time is cut short. So, um, yes, and please just give us back the, the descriptions of the agenda. I mean, that affects all of the agenda items. There's no descriptions. I don't know what happened with that, but there used to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we can let the next resident in, please.
Ms. Lehman, you're on, you didn't.
So yes, what Natalie said echoes very strongly, I think, with anybody who knows what's going on. Mr. Manfredi's claim, and all of you claimed it too, that this was an expansion of our rights is, I, I can just say completely false, okay? You have used it to remove the committee meetings and hop every agenda item over our speaking rights into a voting situation, and in this meeting, the Committee of the Whole, our speaking rights are removed because I had absolutely no information about that. And Commissioner Hecker, I asked you even tonight to get me that letter, or you certainly could have said, I can't get you that letter. There's some legal reason why. But I don't think our legal business is done behind doors, so I'm not sure, even though it's a settlement agreement, that the, the residents shouldn't be allowed to see this. This is how this is part of the case that is going on. And so if it comes back and forth and we see it, then we can comment on it. You need to be doing the bidding of the people of this township. Um, and, and again, I don't understand why that particular item is under Board of Commissioners. It's a land and zoning issue, and so are all three of those, including the, the discussing the township existing conditions.
It's a legal settlement, Ms. Lehman, and that's where we typically list those agenda items.
Say it again?
It's a settlement issue, and that's where we tend to list those agenda items on, on the agenda for the board and the Committee of the Whole meetings.
Just started to tend to list them now because we didn't even have this just a few months ago. And you're saying that's where we tend to list them? You didn't even have a Board of Commissioners Committee, and at no time do I remember you creating a Board of Commissioners, you know, literally committee. When does it meet?
Ms. Lehman, do you have further comments on the agenda this evening?
Yeah.
And I think you should get to them.
Okay, so the experiential, experiential stop sign is, again, does that mean it didn't have the right statistics to put one in? Okay, I'm not sure, again, who's going to deal with the minutes? That was on the agenda tonight. You actually approved the minutes. Is anybody going to deal with my comments about the fact that the minutes do not reflect anything that, about what was said? And I would like to understand, Commissioner Hecker, why you did not answer me on, on those questions. Commissioner Thompson decided what's going to land use and what's not, according to Mr. Manfredi beforehand. So he decided that these particular ACDE were going to go to land use. That's something that's on the agenda for all of you to decide.
There has been, let's, let's be clear. He may make a motion in that regard. We have not decided as a group which way we're going to proceed, and the discussion will unfold and we'll decide accordingly.
Well, why didn't it, why didn't that happen that way? Instead, Mr. Manfredi actually swayed it by saying, you know, Commissioner Thompson has decided this should go on to, to land use, and, and that actually sways it and prevents a regular conversation. Okay, so I am, I am stunned at the, the lack of transparency, and as, as was said tonight by somebody other than me, thank goodness, okay, the fact that you, the whole purpose of you listening to us is to hear us and fix the things that are problematic for us, to give us access to our government, and Commissioner Hecker, you're my commissioner. And yet, yeah, and then tonight I got zero answer, not one answer on, on those items at all. So, and I, and I wrote you about the other issues. All of the commissioners got it. You got it as well. And yet, you feel absolutely no obligation to answer and to help me navigate this government that is completely non-transparent. Okay, when I don't have a reason that there's no document there, it's a simple thing for somebody to answer me and say, this is a legal settlement, and we can't give out answer, we can't give out documents on the legal settlement. In fact, that should be printed, as Natalie was saying, in item B, so that it's clear to everyone who goes looking for a document and finds that there's none there. So we're asking you to please fix the things that are wrong. The website, apparently there is a pushout place where you can get your email notices of things. I've been working for 15 years to get you that.
So Ms. Lehman, your time has expired.
Well, can you let me finish a sentence?
Can you? I've already let you go beyond. I'll let you finish the sentence, but then we'll have to move on.
We have time to finish our sentence, okay? So what I'm saying is, I heard that you have this after 15 years of my trying to get it. I can't find it on the website. And when I first had my meeting with you, you said we'd work on fixing the website. That's not happening. Let's get it happening. Let's get things going in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you. We have no unfinished business this evening, so we're going to move forward to new business, and the first grouping is under Board of Commissioners. Item A, as Manager Manfredi mentioned in his opening comments, we are not actually going to be voting on this this evening, but I will open it up for discussion or question if members of the committee have further questions for the manager.
I have a question.
Commissioner Myers.
It's, it's more a procedural question, as often I have. Should this, should this item go to committee? I think I heard May 13th, which would be the board meeting, but is this an item that should go to committee for discussion?
I don't think so, Commissioner Myers, because I don't believe it is. I don't think there'd be any advantage to it. If you look at the scope, it is so clear. I think it would be more in keeping with the full board, having opportunity to comment it rather than getting vetted to the committee. The only reason that it's, it's, if we had all of our proposals in, it would be here for you this evening. I'm trying to make sure that we, we move because I would like to have the proposals so that we can have an idea of cost and assessment, so that when we start talking about goals and priorities, you'll have something more to look at. So I don't know that there's any advantage to this going to committee, candidly. I don't think it's that complex.
I certainly appreciate that, and as you know, that I have concerns, not about, not about this motion, but structural concerns, and I want to, as everybody else should, see it go as quickly as possible. I was not trying to hold it up in any way.
Oh, I understand. I didn't think you were.
Other, Commissioner Bay. Other Commissioner Bay.
Yeah, just to make sure I understand. Essentially, we've already approved this project through the budget process, and you're just making us aware that the RFP process for the project is underway, correct?
That is correct.
That's it.
Thanks.
Other comments or questions? And if not, we'll move on to item B. Okay. Item B is for us to consider approving the agreement between Harut Himalayan and Mary Himalayan of 1733 Melmar Road, Huntington Valley. And David Himalayan, an adult individual leasing a portion of 730 1733 Melma Road in Abington Township. Commissioner Brodsky, do you want to make a comment?
Hi, thank you, Commissioner Hecker, Vice President Hecker, thank you. I have no problem in having moving this forward to the, it's this simple. It's an agreement between two individuals, the township or entity, the individuals of the Himalians. And I have no problem in having this move to the full committee or the full board for next month's consideration. So I support it. It's fine.
Thank you. Comments or questions from members of the committee? Okay, hearing none, is there a motion on to move this forward to the full board meeting in May?
I make a motion to forward this.
Do we have a second on that motion?
Second.
Okay, the motion has been put forwarded in second. We will now vote. All those in favor?
Hi.
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 Any opposed? Okay, the item moves forward to the the board meeting in May. Item C, thank you. Item C is for us to consider extending a policy for outdoor sales of food and merchandise of existing businesses in the township. During the coronavirus pandemic for an additional 90 days by adopting a resolution. Manager Man Freddie, would you care to comment?
Yes, Vice President Hecker, very simply. The board has passed a resolution to allow this activity during the pandemic. Inasmuch as the governor has extended the state of emergency and all restrictions that still remain, especially as we still see spikes, even with vaccinations. It is, it has just expired and is really asked to be placed here and for consideration. As to whether or not you want to extend that ability for businesses. And that it's really that simple.
Okay, thank you. Do we have comments or questions about this matter? Commissioner Bow.
Thanks, Vice President Hecker. Manager Man Freddie, I just had a quick question about sort of the status of the process and how it's working. And whether businesses are sort of following the process and whether we're finding it efficient. I I remember from the start was sort of wondering how operationally this was going to go. And I just was curious, your your estimation, how how it's working, how we're doing, supporting the local businesses. Nimbleness was important at the start of this, so businesses could get up and running really quickly with outdoor food sales. So I was just curious about your thoughts about how how it's working.
We haven't issued any lately, but when from the time that this began. Office was a little awkward at first and trying to make sure that we were complying with zoning and making sure that everything was done. But I think I think the folks in our permitting and compliance team, especially with the codes, did a great job. When applications came in reviewing them, making sure that we assisted getting the permits approved and on site to to do whatever inspections were necessary. So that people can can get up and running. And I think that perhaps the the best measure is what kind of complaints did we have about our process, and we had none. I mean, there was a few bumps in the road initially, and I think now that we've done it, if businesses want to do this again, they can. We're ready for that, and we would be able to be nimble, as you said, to make sure the dues, there's no.
Yeah, thank you. That's wonderful to hear. I just as a quick follow up, and I have the the resolution here, so I apologize if I missed something. So this would be extending the resolution, so if new businesses wanted to file for this, they could. Or is this allowing us to extend the the arrangements that we've already made with those?
Both.
Having, okay, it is both, because otherwise it would expire. Is that correct? Okay.
Any other questions, Commissioner Bow, or are you good?
No, thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions for members of the committee? Hearing none, can we get a motion to to approve or to move this forward for approval?
I'll make a motion to move this to the board for approval.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Hi.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, this will move forward to the full board meeting in May. And now we'll move to the public work section of our business for the committee of the whole this evening. And there's two items here. The first is for us to consider awarding at the May 13th, 2021 regular business meeting. The following bids received and opened on March 13, 2021. I'm not actually going to read the bids aloud, but I will turn this over to Manager Man Freddie for any comments, or if he would like Mr. Jones to make any comments himself.
Just one one brief comment. I mean, the commenter made a question about the agenda items, and I think this is a about, you know, information related to those. And I think that one of the things that we instituted, and I think it is very informative, and I would call it transparent, candidly. Is every agenda item has an introductory sheet, similar to what was done, you know, prior to in in a number of years ago, it's just been enhanced. Where you have an agenda item, you have an agenda number of the department that does it, the title of that agenda. We've also added an executive summary with which gives you greater detail about each item and then all of the supporting documentations. So anyone who's interested in seeing, for example, in a complex bid that could, you know, amount to a lot of money. One of the things that we've added is one of the first questions that every department director is asked is, is there a cost greater than $10,000? And is a public bid required? So those are things that are on your summary sheet so that when any you or the public or anyone else sees an agenda item, they can immediately go to that. And any supporting documentation in great detail is attached. And if you want an example of of what we've been doing and how we're doing it, turn to page 35 in the committee of the whole agenda. And you'll you'll see a volume of supporting documents, bid information, very specific in detail of of the work of the Public Works Department in particular, as it relates to this bid. So I think the information is there. And with that, I'll turn it to to Mr. Jones, Acting Director, Public Works, to if he has any, if he has any comments or thinks there's anything that the commissioner should know.
Good evening, Commissioners. One comment I want to make, and it was a surprise to us, is that we use the new Penn bid system this year, which is an electronic bidding system that goes out. It is very transparent to public and look at it. And and what it did, it gave us some data back on who was looking at the bids. And who was was downloading the bid documents and stuff, so it gave us some some good data. And one one other thing that surprised us on the bid was that our asphalt or concrete, which has been going up $2 to $3 per ton per yard every year for the last last 10 years, actually stayed the same or went down a little bit this year, which was very surprising to us with the with the economy. But all the the vendors are looking for work. So with that, you know, what the numbers are on there, who we're recommending for the to be granted the or awarded the bid and be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Are there any questions for members of the committee? Okay. So can I get a motion to move this forward for approval at the May 13th, 2021 regular business meeting?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Hi.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, it will move forward to the May 13th board meeting. Item B under Public Works is for us to consider ratifying the change order number one, prepared by McMahon Associates Incorporated for the 2015 ARLE grant intersection improvements of Mount Carmel Avenue and North Hills Avenue in the amount of $5,512.10. And approve final payment to Kuchar Construction Incorporated in the amount of $21,378.70. Manager Man Freddie, would you care to comment on this?
Very simply, this is a ratification of a change order request. When this project was ongoing, there was a field change made that should should have had a change order. That change order did not come through. We discovered it as frankly, as the finance department was going through their project audit and getting things and final invoices for review, discovered that this was not paid in looking at the final payment. And since it required a change order, frankly, I thought it was important for you to ratify and approve the change order, even though it was was already processed. To approve that amount of money so that you were aware of it and then also approve the the total amount.
Thank you, Manager Man Freddie, for clarification. So we we are, we would be approving, moving this forward for radicate ratification in May, or are we actually taking that action this evening?
No, you're doing just what you just said.
Okay, that that's that's what I thought.
Yeah.
Commissioner Hecker.
Yes, Commissioner Zepo.
Okay, I have a question for you. So part of this payment or part of this whole design at that intersection. Are they saying they're complete, everything that they were supposed to do under contract has been completed there?
I don't know. I'll refer that to the manager.
But I, Mr. Jones, we have the application and certification for payment. I believe it's final payment. If I'm looking at that correctly from Kharchik, and they're waiting for payment. It does appear that everything was signed off, and I see Mr. Jones's signature. Mr. Jones, do you want to comment?
Yes, the the work is complete. The work that was was the change order was was part of the design of a trenching system that was not going to work due to conflicts. The discussion was had between a foreman for Kharchik and a foreman for Abington on that day. The change was needed, the change was completed, and the the project is done.
So a final inspection was made. Am I correct?
Correct.
All right, now what are they doing about re-syncing those lights? I was almost, I can't begin to tell you, feared my life, I was almost hit there. That intersection has been a mess for 35 years. I live in ours, Lee, okay? Those lights have to be resynced. So whatever they did, which to me, what they did, I don't understand what they did there, okay? Makes no sense whatsoever, okay? Those lights have to be resynced, neither an arrow or delayed green, okay? So was that part of the plan down there? And I'm getting tired of running into people at church, at the shopping center about that intersection. So was that part of the plan, resyncing those lights? It should have been part of the plan.
There was the PennDOT's traffic safety study. And then what was recommended and what was designed is what is complete now. I'd have to get more information on on syncing and and what else could be done. But what is complete now is what was recommended and what was in the PennDOT, PennDOT plan for that intersection.
Okay, get the information to me to see if that's part of that, because that makes no sense. It doesn't solve any problem. The problem down there has been, okay, how many near misses down there? Because there's neither no arrow or those lights aren't synced properly, okay? That was the major problem down there, okay? So I need to know what was in the original plan, okay, for that project, okay? And moving forward, are they, who's going to resync sync those lights? Who's going to put an arrow there? As far as I'm concerned, that project's not complete. So I need that information because I'm really concerned about this, because the other day, I I gotta tell you, okay? A truck flew around that corner. I was trying to make a left hand turn, and I can't begin to tell you, took 20 years off my life. That's why I'm so pissed off about what's going on. Now this comes up, a final inspection was made, this is done, and now it's not complete. So I need an answer to that.
We can get you an answer. I know an arrow was not in the design. And we'll get, I'll get you some information on on the original or the the plan that was approved.
Please, you got it.
Any other comments or questions on this agenda item?
Commissioner Hecker, I have a few.
Okay, Commissioner Thompson, go ahead.
Yeah, actually, I just wanted to echo Commissioner Zepo's comments. Mike, what I had been told originally was that there's a delayed left, or at least a delayed signal to allow for left turns to occur at that intersection, and there hasn't been any. I think we're all still kind of waiting to see that, because the left turns are not easy to make at that intersection. And the house that pushes out into the intersection does kind of restrict visibility and makes it very challenging to make a left there. On the topic of the change order itself, I am wondering where the money for the change order comes from. It's an additional $5,000 on top of an early grant, so is that coming from the township funds or is that coming from from the grant money?
The the grant, the the project came in under budget of what was what was originally granted, sort of money in it in the grant to cover the costs. When it was bid out, the bids came back less than than what was expected.
Okay, and the change order itself is a is a result of unforeseen conditions. Do we know what was done to to, in terms of due diligence, to figure out where some of the underground utilities were in advance of the work in the field?
It just was underground storm that was not in 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 a plan. It was, you know, it's an old old intersection. It was an old PennDOT roads, and they they we ran into some storm sewer lines that were not expected. And some gas lines that were in different spots and they were marked. So there was multiple conflicts with the underground gophering and caused them to have to dig by hand. And it was a slower project and a different way of re of conditioning the road.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, so what we would be, if someone wants to make the motion to do so, we would be, we're not actually ratifying the change order this evening. We would be moving it forward for approval at the May 13th board meeting. Does anyone wish to make a motion to do so?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Commissioner Hecker?
Yes.
I just want to make everyone aware that we will be making that payment. And the reason it says ratification is that $5,000 in this payment needs to be made. And Ms. McElveen, you can give me the exact date, or we lose grant funding. So it's one of the reasons why we wanted to get it through this evening and call it a ratification. So if Ms. Ms. McElveen, what was that date that if they don't receive payment by, we lose the grant funding?
I'm working to find it, but I believe Monica is on as an attendee. She has the exact date.
But it is prior, it is prior to May 13th, correct?
At my understanding, that we need to, we need to send, we need to have the check paid so that we can send the notice to PennDOT saying that that was deposited prior to the May deadline, yes.
Okay, and it's just prior to that, so that's
So to be clear that
understand in in, again, full disclosure, that we're kind of backtracking with this.
Right, so then, so that we're all clear, the payment will be made prior to the next board meeting, and at the board meeting, we will be ratifying that action.
And that change order, yes.
Yes, okay. All right, so it's been moved and seconded. We I we voted in the affirmative. I I did not get the chance to ask, is there anybody opposed?
I'm opposing it for the for the simple reasoning. I'd hold their money till that's fixed properly. I've dealt with contractors for 50 years with two governmental agencies, okay? I know the game, okay? I'd hold, I'd settle on their money. You fix it, then you'll get paid. That's the way you do business. So I'm opposing it.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Zepo. Any other opposed? Thank you. We will now move into the land use section of this evening's agenda, and we'll start with agenda item A. This is to consider approving the minor subdivision application by Kyle Doherty for the Belmont Avenue Lot Line Consolidation located on Belmont Avenue at Artman Street and Westmont Avenue. And I will turn to Commissioner Thompson.
Thank you, Commissioner Hecker. As was mentioned earlier, my suggestion and my motion this evening will be to move this on to the Land Use Committee in May. Mainly for the reason that, well, the application looks pretty complete. There are comments from Panoni, our engineer, or no, actually, maybe Bushay and James, I can't quite recall on this one. But they're on page 222, and they have not yet been responded to by the applicant. Generally, we would like to see a letter indicating compliance or any kind of Indicating compliance or any kind of deviation from the original plan. And I don't see one in this packet. So I'm I'm asking that the applicant. Give that to us prior to the Land Use Committee meeting and I'm asking that we move this forward to Land Use Committee in May. So I will down motion.
Excuse me, I'm the applicant Kyle Doherty. I believe we did submit that. We have responded to Panoni Engineering.
Yeah, and I'd like to speak before we vote on.
Yeah, yeah, well, we're not going to vote on it before there's full discussion. We don't even have a second on the motion yet.
Commissioners, this is Gary Tilford. Can I speak? With representing Mr. Doherty.
Yes, Mr. Tilford, please.
So we did. We did receive a letter from. Panoni dated April fifth. Review the comments with my client. We don't have. We're going to say that all the comments are will comply. We have intention to. Satisfy all of them. The sewer planning is in the process and DEP at the present time. I thought this meeting was going to move to a conditional approval or a recommendation for a conditional approval. Up until to address, you know, any outstanding permits or the outstanding comments that we just received. The plan has been in the township process for quite some time and. It's a fairly simple plan where Mr. Doherty purchased two undersized lots of fifty foot frontage, both on Belmont Avenue. And he's proposing to combine them. In one single lot and at the time back last. July, August, when he approached our firm to prepare the plans, Mr. Doherty had not. Even yet considered what kind of house he would build there. But as this process is dragged on, he is he is working towards. Decide on on his structure. As you know, prices are going up, so he has a keen eye on what's happening in the in the real world in building. And if. I'm not sure the committee that you're recommending to this go back to. Is that a is that a? Committee that we attend? Or I thought this was the meeting. That we have the discussions about the comments and waivers.
Yeah, Mr. Tilford, let me explain. So this meeting. Is where all matters that come before ultimately come before the board go and the purpose of this meeting is for the committee of the whole to decide. Whether a particular agenda item is ready to go forward to next month's business meeting for formal review and vote. Or if there is belief among the members of this committee this evening that it would be referred to committee and in this case, it would be the Land Use Committee. Where you would be afforded the opportunity to make a presentation, be heard and answer comments, answer questions.
Hacker, can I jump in there?
Yeah, and then I know Commissioner Bowman wants to speak.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, 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 go ahead. Finish your comments, Mike, and then we'll go to Commissioner Bowman.
Yeah, Mr. Tilford, just to point out, this won't add any time to the process. The vote tonight would either send you to the committee meeting, which is May fifth, or we'll send you to the full board meeting, which I believe is. May thirteenth for a final approval. Depending on any kind of affirmative vote at the committee meeting, it would just be moved on to the the Board of Commissioners meeting on the thirteenth. Based on your comments, I'm a little more concerned now because my board packet doesn't have any comments in it. From Panoni, I only have comments for Shay and James, and I don't have any kind of response letter. It's asked Management Freddie, are you aware of anything that came from Panoni on this application?
If I'm not mistaken and Cal's on the call, he can he can answer, but I think part of the issue is, as you know, we we have a deadline for documents. And once those documents are made part of this file and shared with you, we don't drop documents on you after the information has already been sent out. It's we typically leave it up to the applicants to make their presentations at the at this meeting and just and let you know whether or not. You know, once they've received those comments, whether they will comply or they will not, and it gets presented at the time. So very simply. We have two choices. We not put them through the process and and make the applicant wait another thirty days when their when their responses come in after the agenda deadline. That you have established or. Do what we're doing right now. They have an opportunity to come in. They have an opportunity to present their plan. They have an opportunity to address the comments. If they did not have the time to get it to us in advance of our deadline to get it to you, they would present it here. And it is completely at at their peril. If they don't have everything to us in in time and it's really that it's a timing issue.
Commissioner Bowman.
Yeah, this applicant's been delayed. Partly by Abington and the changes that we've gone through over there too. This has languished for a long time. He's bringing two lots together. He'll come back with the land development. When he has a house that he wants to build at this point, he's just joining the two lots. And it sounds like Mr. Tilford has said that they're they're willing to comply with any suggestions that were made in in the in the most recent letter. So I I know that he and I was hoping that this will be passed on to the full board for the consent agenda, but. I I don't know how people, you know, other people feel differently, I guess. We'll have to see.
Thank you, Commissioner Bowman. Mr. Doherty, you want to make a comment?
Yeah, just to kind of piggyback off of Mr. Bowman there. Yeah, it wasn't as so much that we haven't been getting our stuff in on time. It had a lot to do with the recent changes over at the township. We actually did submit all this stuff several months ago, but they somehow got lost. I presented it in front of the. Planning Committee back in December with no objections and. After that, everything kind of just disappeared for some reason. And I know the prior engineer that was working with the township. I guess they were working on it, but somehow that fell through. And now you have Panoni, which, as we stated, we did reply to their. Their letter and we will comply with, you know, the suggestions and everything. So I'm just saying, I, you know. Be nice. Yeah, I've been waiting almost six months now. Actually, it's been. Probably five months, close to five months now since I've been in front of the planning committee. So, yeah, I'd appreciate it if. You know, we wouldn't get delayed much longer considering the prices and everything. It's skyrocketed and always looking to seem to go up more. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Don.
Mr. Hacker, if I may.
You may.
So, you know, there's reference to delays on on our part. I I don't want to get into. Finger pointing because that's not really necessary. I think Commissioner Thompson's point is whether or not the board gets into the point by point. Will comply or not comply is not going to change. Any approval. The the only additional requirement upon the applicant would be that they now have to attend the committee meeting in May. So that the committee can can better understand the application. The final approval would still be at the May thirteenth meeting. It it does not delay them. Again, this process, as we've said time and time again, is another step in the process. That that in the past, this would have gone right to the Land Use Committee. If there were problems. It would have gone to another month. With this process, you're getting it now. You're having the opportunity to discuss it. And decide if you wanted to go to the Land Use Committee for future vetting. Commissioner Thompson has asked today. Based on his reading of this, if this and he is making that same recommendation. Via motion for this to go to committee, it costs them no more time. And as far as when the process began, yes, that is true. It began in October and then there were also additional reviews necessary. Relative to that a third review that came out back in December. There were answers and there was other information that had to come back to us that we did get around that same time of transition. But it wasn't necessarily. All related to transition. I think there were items that were still outstanding that had to be reviewed. We didn't receive the EAC comments until March. So I think there are a bunch of points here that are valid on both sides. But again, it doesn't change anything. That their their approval would still be given if they were to get it on the thirteenth of of May. It I think all Commissioner Thompson is saying that he would like in this one particular application, a closer look at it in committee. It wouldn't cost them any more time.
Yeah.
Correct. May I address this man Freddie?
Mr. Tilford, yes, you you may.
I I appreciate your. Points that you made and if I might say if we can. Address this on the May fifth and still reach the full board on the thirteenth. I think that's, you know, agreeable with my client and. Yeah, I look forward to presenting then on the fifteenth. That's the desire of the board.
Thank you, Mr. Tilford. So I think, you know, I'm going to leave it to Commissioner Thompson and Commissioner Bowman to sort this through unless there are other comments or questions as this is. The purview of the land committee, but the the landing question is in the Commissioner Bowman's word. Commissioner Bowman.
Well, in in light of his remarks, Mr. Tilford's remarks, that's fine. Let's put it to committee and then it can go if it's approved there, it'll come to us on the thirteenth next month.
Actually, I mean, I think the Manager Man Federer, correct me if I'm wrong. I mean, this matter will come for the board regardless of the vote of the Land Use Committee, correct?
It will go. It will go to the Board of Commissioners on May thirteenth.
Yeah, whether whether they vote.
Motion is if the motion is to send it to the Land Use Committee on May fifteenth for for review to be. Then forwarded to the Board of Commissions on the thirteenth, then that's what would happen to it.
Understood.
Yeah, committee meetings may five, so we would hear it may refer to the thirteenth.
So Commissioner Thompson, is that your motion?
That is. That is my motion.
Okay. Are there any other comments or questions before I ask for a second? Commissioner Ball.
I'm sorry if I'm not picking up on this, but if if it's sort of fate accomplished, it's going to go to the board anyway. Is is. Can I just maybe Commissioner Thompson have it? Understanding where your thinking is about what would happen? In the in the at the committee, if it's if it's determined that it's already definitely going to go to the board, I. I don't know. I don't feel like I'm all the way there and sort of understanding. The path of this through the committee. If it's if the if the motion is to move it to the committee and then move it to the. Board for sure. It oh, sorry, provided that we think that there is the document that is not included in the packet here like it's. Is it? Is that just sort of giving us a double check to make sure that everything's there and everything's in order? Is that?
Commissioner Bowles, that's exactly the intent of my. I I am. I just want us to see that we get responses from the applicant. And have opportunity ourselves to review those responses and ensure that they're complying with the desires of the township engineer and the township itself.
Yep.
And if they are, if we have any questions, we have an opportunity to ask those questions of the applicant on the fifth. If we don't have any questions, then it's a pretty straightforward meeting on the fifth. We pass it forward to the thirteenth for final approval.
Thank you. I I, you know, I think that's in keeping with spirit of the committee of the whole, which is. Let's. Let's move it to committee if there's any other boxes that we need to check or discussions that we need to have or documents to review. And if we can do that. And it becomes sort of pro forma, then all the best for the applicant and we just go from there. So I'm happy to support and. Second the motion when the time is right, if there are no other comments.
Yeah, I'm I'm gonna. President Speaker wants to speak, but before I do so, just want to be clear. We heard from the applicant earlier in the presentation or the discussion that they plan to comply with everything that's been recommended. So. I can't imagine there's going to be an issue with this because they've gotten feedback. They've said, well, we will respond affirmatively to everything you're recommending. I'm not sure what else we can ask them to do. President Speaking.
Um, yeah, actually, you know, I I. Commissioner Bull said said exactly said exactly what how how the how this works in this case and how the committee works in general and it. Either, you know, either this is, you know, this this will be sent to this will be sent to the Land Use Committee and assuming everything goes forward. Then without, you know, then it will go to the May thirteenth meeting. So anyway, I don't I withdraw my comment. No worries.
Okay, thank you. All right. So I think we've belabored this. We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Hi. Is there any any opposed? Thank you and thank you, Mr. Doherty, Mr. Tilford. The full board will look forward to seeing you at the May thirteenth meeting.
Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. We'll move on to item B, which is consider approving ABP Investments Incorporated for property located at ten fifty-one, ten fifty-three and ten fifty-seven Eastern Road. At Tyson Avenue to consolidate the three existing parcels and subsequently subdivide into two new lots. I'm going to turn to first Manager Man Freddie and then I believe President Spiegelman would like to make some comments. President Spiegelman, perhaps we'll start with you.
Um, actually, I can make it. I'm perfectly fine making my comments after Mr. Hurling has made any presentation. Otherwise, I can just.
Okay. Well, then I'll have Mr. Man Freddie introduce Mr. Hurley.
Thank you, Mr. Hacker. Mr. Hurley, are you prepared to to present your application and answer where you are in the process? And answer any questions of the commissioners?
Yes.
Would you begin and then be and then Mr. Hassan can make any comments and then, of course, President Speaking.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Arthur Hurling here tonight to talk about my proposal. For the redevelopment of ten fifty-one, ten fifty-three. And fifty-seven Eastern Road. I give you a background on the property. Currently, there are three parcels. One parcel is a single family home. It's ten fifty-seven Eastern Road and then there's a twin home. And fifty-one and ten fifty-three. The left side of the twin home consists of two apartments. And the right side of the twin is. One home. If you look at page two. Of the presentation, sorry, next page, page three. Page four, one more. Outlined in yellow are the three parcels. Outlined in green is a project I did last year. Some of you may be familiar with the ten forty-three Eastern Road. That was. Construction of four townhomes. So what I'm proposing here is. To remove the single family home and replace that with new construction. And then to restore the twin home, it didn't ten fifty-one, ten fifty-three Eastern Road. If you go to the next page. This is what ten fifty-seven Eastern Road looks like. It's a single family home. That home would be demolished. The next page is the twin home. The left side has the two apartments, the right side is one unit. We're going to restore that structure. The next slide, ten forty-three Eastern Road. That was last year's project. If you go to the next slide there, this is a basically called a rendering of the existing. Conditions there. You can see from right to left, the new development that went in with parking in the rear. Then. The driveways for the three parcels. So you basically have four driveways onto Eastern Road. You go to the next slide. Let's see, our plan is to eliminate two of the driveways. Where the red Xs are. And then the the development from last year, that entrance would remain and then driveway number two, the ten fifty-three Eastern Road would remain. The next slide. The color rendering of basically a U shape of the property. So all the parking would be. Put in the rear of the property and then we're basically eliminating two of the four driveways onto Eastern Road. The next page has some existing pictures of the sidewalk and then proposed sidewalk. the sidewalk and then proposed sidewalk. Uh, there's a little bit of sidewalk in front of the three parcels. Um so what I'm proposing is to improve that frontage uh with sidewalk, I believe we're putting a park bench in. And um that'll, you know, make it more accessible to people walking up and down Eastern Road, at least in that that section there. Uh, the next slide is uh just a rendering of uh what I'm thinking, uh, very similar to what I did last year. Then the next page has some floor plans. Uh, also have the Boucher and James review letter. That is their third review. We have since um responded to that letter with a fourth submission uh that was submitted in early March. And um there, there wasn't much to it. There mostly will comply, just miscellaneous items for the most part. And then we're just awaiting a fourth uh review letter from Panoni, and then once we receive that, we can respond. Um, so that's, that's what I'm proposing there, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Hurley. Before we do that, we're gonna uh have President Spiegelman make a few comments.
Um, yeah, and actually I can, I can sort of launch right into questions. Um, do you want to start with comments? Because this, this is actually right at the edge of uh of Ward eleven. And uh, before I start, I know right now uh, the 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 biggest concern of anyone who lives in this area, this is for for the benefit of folks who live anywhere near this intersection of Eastern and Tyson um, is uh the the traffic difficulties. Um, Tyson Avenue has always been really different, difficult with this two-way stop. Tyson is a state road. Um, it has stop signs. Eastern is a county road. It does not have stop signs. Crossing Eastern has been on Tyson, whether on on foot, by car, however, has been difficult for at at least uh the last, you know, the entire time I've that I've lived in in Ward eleven. Um, and it's now gotten significant and worse because of the change in traffic patterns due to the Edge Hill Tyson project, which is an understandable change of of traffic patterns, you know, part of Edge Hill is one way. So just for anyone, for anyone listening, um, uh, in in communication with Commissioners Oppone who uh whose ward begins, whose ward borders on mine on the opposite side of Eastern Tyson. Um, I've already uh begun taking steps uh to try to have Pendot reevaluate that intersection for some kind of upgraded traffic control um in order to make things uh flow more smoothly and uh and safely. Um, so all of that said, um, uh, I I do want to say, uh, uh, Mr. Hurling, uh, the project that you guys did uh last year, um, I know we had, uh, I know it was, it was somewhat sort of torturous process of my forever asking for renderings when you came before us, but the project honestly is absolutely fantastic. It looks great. The four townhouses, they they look, they look fantastic. They're in beautiful shape. The drainage, your your MS four compliance is is excellent. The drainage is significantly improved. The appearance is significantly improved. The sidewalks look fantastic. Um, so uh, given that really there's the not much of, not much of a change as far as the number of units here. We're really talking about going from four uh, four dwellings to seven, not a huge change. Um, uh, I I have to say, I'm looking, you know, looking at the renderings, going over everything you presented at the planning commission. I'm 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 very excited about this. I'm actually, I'm in fa- quite in favor of it. Um, just wanted to touch on a a couple of things. Um, sidewalks, which you know are something of an obsession of mine. Um, if I'm correct now, uh, once these sidewalks are installed and they connect the current sidewalks to nowhere, including the the excellent ones that you just built for the new project, there will now be sidewalks um for the entire stretch of Eastern Road from uh the Luke Oil at Susquehanna all the way up to the SPCA at Edge Hill. Is that correct?
Uh, it doesn't quite go to the SPCA. Um, I mean, my sidewalk stops at the development I did uh last year, and then there's a, I guess, stone, um, I guess it's a stone wall along the
Oh, that is true. There was
Yeah.
wall, I guess.
Yeah.
Almost.
Almost, yeah.
But almost, almost. Um, and uh I I understand that this is, uh, this is just another thing I want want folks to hear. Um, my understanding from your presentation at the planning commission is that um, I think thanks to, uh, thanks to the uh, the the U shape and the fact that all of your properties will now be uh contiguous. Um, I believe you have a plan to modify the way trash is collected there to to make things smoother and easier as far as just the flow and and it's a, because it's a rather tight section of Eastern. Um, do you want to talk?
Yeah, so we um, you know, because there are going to be quite a few units there. Um, and I know in this municipality, uh, each, each, I guess, dwelling has three trash cans. Um, so you know, there would be quite a few trash cans on Eastern Road every, and every day they they pick it up. So what we proposed in the back of the parking lot is a dumpster, uh, that's buffered with some trees and a nice fence in front of it, so it's not unsightly um that the residents could then use and that would uh negate the need for all those trash cans down on uh Eastern Road.
And so that would be uh you guys as the, as the landlords or whoever would would be uh, there would be a private uh trash contractor.
Correct.
And of course, arrangements would be made so that the trash pickup would not be at some not, not some god awful hour in the middle of the night and and would, you know, would would be
Yeah, normal, normal business uh hours.
Wonderful. Um, honestly, I mean, obviously, this is a new for, again, mostly for the benefit of folks listening. Um, uh, this development is good, you know, uh, uh, would be, have to be compliant with all our MS four requirements. So as before, all uh stormwater drainage would, will have to be better than the current conditions. Um, and yeah, again, it was certainly the case. Uh, you certainly made that the case with the uh, the previous development. So um, unless I happen to think of anything else, that's actually uh, that's actually all that I have.
Thank you, President Spiegelman. Are there other comments or questions about the proposal, Commissioner Thompson?
Thanks, Commissioner Hacker. I just uh I just wanted to kind of give a pat on the back to Mr. Hurling for trying to save that existing structure and restore it. I think anytime a developer comes to the township and uh proposes to salvage uh a little piece of history uh and a little bit of the character of the township um, that that deserves some recognition. And so uh, I applaud you for that, and I I thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Are there other comments or questions? Uh, hearing none, um, we'll entertain a motion to move forward.
I uh move that we uh just move forward to the May thirteenth board meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you. The matter will move forward to the May thirteenth board meeting.
Thank you.
Thanks again, Mr.
Thank you, Mr. Hurley.
Thank you.
Moving to item C, this is for us to consider approving the proposed minor land development for the Gullman Group at property address twelve fifty Greenwood Avenue. The applicant intends to enclose the existing patio located on the rear of the existing building at the Plaza Apartments.
Commissioner Hacker.
Yes, Commissioner Thompson.
Thank you. Um, pursuant to my previous motion, I I would make a motion that this one moved to the uh the land use committee meeting on May fifth. Um, again, for the same reason, there isn't a response to the the comments um that were provided in February of twenty twenty-one to the applicant. Uh, of particular note, if uh, Panoni's comment at the very end, that says, we do not recommend final minor land development application approval until the applicant has addressed at a minimum the zoning comments, and uh I don't see any addressing of those comments in this packet.
If I could jump in, it's Krista Norris from Bowler Engineering here on behalf of the applicant.
Um, yes, sir, please, go ahead.
Sure. So uh, we have been in close communication with Panoni. I know they did note that at the end of their real uh review letter, but these are all will complies. There are no zoning issues out here for for us to address. Those zoning comments were more related to just incorrect zoning information being provided uh on the the plans that were submitted. Uh, really, this application, and if I have the ability to to run through what's being proposed out here, uh, it's very minor building addition on the back end of of the Plaza Apartments. Uh, all the comments uh aside from two waiver requests related to some survey information uh are all will complies uh along with, I believe there was a comment in the county review letter uh to remove uh an ADA parking space uh which is certainly not a problem with us as well. Uh, there there are, I think, an environmental committee comment and also a comment from from the county planning commission about uh adding some green area to the parking lot. Unfortunately, there's just not any areas for us to to plant any shade trees out there. However, uh, one of the recommendations from the planning commission, who we uh received uh approval from or recommendation of approval last month was just to provide some additional landscaping around the perimeter uh of what the expanded or enclosed uh patio space will be. Uh, so again, I think uh, I think the township engineer is on the phone. Uh, he can, he can speak to the conversations that we had about these comments being very minor. Uh, we would certainly appreciate being able to be put on uh the board meeting uh next uh next month and not have to go through the LDC if possible.
Thank you. Um, uh, Commissioner Weingrad, do you have comments?
Um, I was looking at the materials. Um, were you able to provide a sewer review letter and a fire marshal review letter? Did that, do that ever happen?
We did not receive any from from sewer or file. Again, there's, there's no uh new units being proposed. This is all amenity space. Uh, that's really being attached to existing amenity space. And I know Jerry from the Gowan groups on on the call here as well, he can speak to what those functions will be in that new area. But again, it's really just an extension of of an existing amenity space. I don't even think there's any new plumbing uh that'll be installed in there. It's it's just all uh more of a library type feel, if you will.
Yeah, that, I was gonna, my next question about is what, what was this going to be used for? I think it was four hundred and fifty-nine square feet. Is that what?
I think it's, I believe it's four, four hundred and eighty square feet.
Okay. What's, what's the intention to use this?
Okay, this is Jerry Slipikoff from the Gowan Group. Um, basically, we're, we're planning on doing a major uh renovation or upgrading of the lobbies of the of the club room that's part of uh that it's that we're actually extending here, adding a theater, and all that will be under a separate permit. But the, anyone who's familiar with the inside of the plaza, there's a a social room there that's very small. It gets a lot of use and um we felt like we, and we had an outdoor patio that with um French doors going out to it that we thought would help kind of extend the club room, but nobody really uses it. It's mostly uh elderly people. They don't want to be out in the sun. They don't want to be out when it's cold. So they don't really use it at all. So our plan was in the course of the renovation and the upgrades of our club room that we would extend it, we would cover basically the existing patio and create um a room that's more like a little library room, a place that people can sit, work on their laptops, if that's what they want to do, or sit and read the paper. There'll be a fireplace in there. And, you know, really, that's it. Anything, any plumbing or anything like that, it would be part of the permit for the existing portion of the club room. Um, but, you know, we feel that it would be a great amenity, uh, you know, an additional amenity for the people and uh, you know, there's an awful lot of competition uh coming into the area. And, you know, all of the new buildings are amenity driven. So that's really what the purpose of this is. And and in addition, you know, it, as it can serve as this library type of room to sit in and whatever. If somebody wanted to have a party, we could move the furniture around, open up the French doors, which will remain. And, you know, it can become part of the excuse me, of the party room that that they use uh on a regular basis.
Thank you. Uh, I'm gonna call on Cal, our engineer from Panoni, to weigh in.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, good evening, everybody. Uh, so as the, as the applicant's engineer had mentioned, uh, Chris, uh, our review letter for this project was issued back on February nineteenth, twenty twenty-one, and since then I know the applicant has uh made modifications. And pro- normal process is you go into a uh, for example, you go to the planning commission, and their case, they want on the March twenty-third, and they got recommendation from them. Proper procedure is you go into the Board of Commissioners meeting with the same exact information, same exact plan. And at that meeting, you will state exactly how you propose to address the uh the comments. Uh, so yes, uh, the applicant's engineer, Bowler, had stated to us that they can and they will address the zoning comment. And that's really what triggered my recommendation of not recommended approval. Uh, I never recommend approval on any land development project, whether it is mi- uh minor or major. Uh, if there are any outstanding zoning comments, unless they have been addressed. Uh, other than that, uh, I know the applicant said they're gonna address them, and I have full faith on them. If this application goes uh to the land use committee, as the commissioners had stated, uh, I have uh a confident, confidence that they'll address the comments and then be ready to move forward to the May meeting.
Cal, can I ask, is is a sewer review letter uh appropriate or a fire marshal review letter needed?
Uh, so fire marshal, uh, yes. Uh, although the fire marshal, a fire marshal is needed from an internal circulation standpoint. You always want to make sure that the fire trucks are not hindered by any way. Uh, the sewer will always, uh, the comment is there because we really sometimes do not know. And it's may not be as part of the land development application. They may be proposing something that requires some kind of a a plumbing fixture. Uh, so we would need to know. All they have to do in that case is to respond and say, oh, by the way, there's not gonna be anything that requires plumbing, and therefore uh it will not be needed, and then we will accept that answer.
Thank you. I mean, I I think that we should move forward then to then to land use. I go with Commissioner Thompson's view that I think it's best, we're not gonna lose any time. It's just a matter uh getting, nodding our eyes and crossing our Ts and getting everything we need, which I anticipate we will for final approval for the Board of Commissioner meeting. So I I don't have an objection going into the, to the uh, to the land use committee.
Okay, are there other comments or questions before we entertain a motion? Okay, hearing none. Commissioner Thompson, you want to restate what you said at the outset?
There, I make a motion to move this forward to land use committee of uh, May fifth, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you. Item D is for us to consider Planning Commission recommended approval for the proposed minor land development for Holy Redeemer Health System located at sixteen forty-eight Huntington Pike. The applicant intends to construct a new seventeen hundred and seventy-two square foot building addition, which will be for a new linear accelerator use. So this will start with Manager Man Freddy.
Thank you, Vice President Hacker. The applicant uh who is here and will present has been before the planning commission. They have to go to the zoning hearing board. I believe that is scheduled for April twentieth. And they are uh trying to move through the process, and we are doing what we can to help them uh get thoroughly reviewed and through the process because it is time sensitive with uh the project that they are trying to get done as there are partners and and other uh entities involved. So with that, I'll I'll just turn it over to the applicant, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Jack Dempster. I'm Vice President of Facilities and Construction for Holy Redeemer, and um as was stated, we're looking to add an addition to our cancer center on the hospital. It's a, it's a ground floor, single-story addition of about just over seventeen hundred square feet. We have been able to um respond to all of the comments that were submitted um by Panoni, um albeit they were officially um submitted yesterday. And um i- if need be, we can address um any of those items uh this evening. We also have put in our application for zoning board approval. Um, that went in today as well. And so we're um looking to get on uh the May agenda for uh um zoning approval. And uh so essentially, I have here with me tonight, um Chris Cummings, our attorney from Stradly Ronan. I also have with me Timothy Bowles from uh Bowles Smythe, our civil engineer. Um, if need be, he has the ability to bring up any documents um that we can share. Um and uh you know, we look forward to to getting this through the uh Board of Commissioners at next month's meeting um so that we can quickly get this to uh construction. We've already submitted for third-party review. We have Department of Health approval. Um, we've got approval from the third-party reviewer, and we've put in the application for building permits uh pending our our approvals here. Um, Chris, is there anything else that I I should add?
What, in some, the um yeah, as far as the Panoni review letter goes.
as far as the Pinoni review letter goes, for complying with all of the comments and only asking for two waivers and the waivers are relatively minor. They pertain to one requiring property information for surrounding property owners when we're going to be providing it on the plan for those property owners that whose whose properties border on the property line near where the accelerator is going to go, but not for the rest of the hospital campus. And I think there was also a request for a full boundary survey done of the property. We provided a condominium plan that was prepared by an engineer two years ago and hoped that that would would suffice for that. But beyond those two, technical waivers were complying with everything else that was in the Pinoni letter. And this is virtually identical to a linear accelerator that was added to Holy Redeemer Hospital about ten years ago. It's just a function of the fact that the existing linear accelerator is going to out live its usefulness in the very near future. And this new one will needs to be online before that happens so that it can pick up the processes that that the existing was currently performing.
Thank you. Commissioner Brodsky, as this is in your board, do you have comments that you'd like to make before I open it up?
Thank you, Vice President Hacker. Thank you, Mr. Man Freddie. Thank you to the representatives from Holy Redeemer. I actually had the opportunity to sit in on the planning commission meeting when this was presented. And I also had the opportunity to review the additional plans. Based on what I've seen so far and based on what's been represented to me that the applicants will actually comply with the recommendations of the planning commission and may have been accommodating. I would have no problem in supporting this moving forward to the full board for the May meeting. And I would ask for the support of that and I would thank all involved. That's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Brodsky. Do we have other comments or questions from members of the committee? Hearing none, Commissioner Brodsky, do you wish to make an official motion?
Sure, I'll make the motion to move this forward as the agenda item is currently stated to the May two thousand twenty one meeting. Go to the full board of commissioners. Second.
We have a move a motion and a second. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Is there any opposed? Hearing none, the matter will move forward to the May thirteenth board meeting.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for attending this evening. Cal, do you have a?
Thank you, Commissioner. Just wanted to to clarify something. This application has to go for a special exception. I just wanted to make sure that by the time it makes it to the next Board of Commissioners meeting, it already had been to the zoning zoning hearing board for the special exception. I'm not sure about the date one. I believe it is sometime in April. It may be, if my memory is correct, around April twentieth, maybe.
Yes.
At that time, they may be able to present at the commissioners to move forward with with the final approvals. Otherwise, it may just be a matter of timing, that's all.
Now, if I if I just heard correctly, it does not sound like they're going to make the April twentieth. It's going to be the May. If they do not make the May meeting, one of the options, and I'll certainly defer to Solicitor Gallagher. But one of the options for the board would be to only grant approval if they received a special exception. Or if they if the board prefers, you can wait until after the zoning hearing board meeting to to grant approval. There are options depending upon when they go.
I would agree with that.
Okay.
Just for the board edification.
Thank you. All right, since we have voted on that matter, we'll move forward to item E under land use. And this is to consider planning commission recommended approval for the proposed minor land development for the Sisters of the Redeemer located at five twenty one Morden Road. The applicant intends to construct an accessory building barn to support the existing farm operations that are currently performed in the existing building. And again, Manager Man Freddie, I'll turn to you.
Thank you, Vice President Hacker. This too is an application, as you stated, and as the agenda item stated, they have gone through the planning commission. And the applicant, you know, being a member of the community, went to the planning commission. They too will have to go, my understanding is, to the zoning hearing board. And we are just trying to move them through the process as well.
Thank you.
The applicant is, I believe, in attendance. Sister Dora is here as well.
That would be happy to have Sister make comments if she would like.
Hello, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Thank you for your time this evening and grateful for certainly the support in moving this forward. I don't think I have any specific comments. I believe then we've turned in a narrative for that. But it's really to continue the growth of a community garden that began over ten years ago. And it's just really rose out of the interest of the surrounding, the individuals and the surrounding community. So we've just received encouragement and support over the years so that it has grown and we've outgrown our existing structures. So we appreciate this.
Thank you, Sister. Commissioner Brodsky, would you like to comment?
Sure, thank you, Vice President Hacker. Thank you, Manager Man Freddie, Sister. I don't think I told Sister Dora, but Sister Anna, thank you for that. So this is a good project, the barn. This is not a problem. It's a nice land area. I encourage those who have not been by there to actually go to where the farm is. Now, as a side note, this is going to be kind of funny. The there's a farmer's market there every Saturday. And when people were referencing the farmer's market on Melmar, when that individual stopped farming, stopped, not stopped farming, but stopped his retail operation. He went over there to the sisters and they were accommodating to him and it was very nice. And it's a nice little farmer's market and I encourage the support of that. I think that the barn would be a nice idea back there. I did put this out to the neighbors on the immediate area for the Lower Huntington Valley Civic Association. And I at least spoke with the president and advised of this. I think it's a it's a it's a good project. And I think if my understanding is correct, they have to meet certain conditions and get certain approvals of the planning commission recommendations, which my understanding is that they will cooperate and they will meet those conditions, but it's not a bad project. I support it. I think it's fine. And I also would encourage you to go to the full May thirteen, twenty twenty one meeting. And I again, thank the sisters. I thank the manager for his assistness in this. And I also thank you, Vice President Hacker, for allowing this on the on the committee agenda this evening. So if anyone has any questions, I encourage you to go to the farmer's market. It's a nice little thing in our township and it's good. So that's my comments. Thank you all. If anybody has any questions, I've been there. It's good.
Thank you, Commissioner Brodsky. Questions for members of the committee? Commissioner Thompson.
Commissioner Hacker, just just one, I don't have a whole lot of information in my packet on this one, but it sounds like this one still has to go to zoning. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, that's my only question for this evening.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, Commissioner Brodsky, would you like to make a motion?
Sure, I'll make the motion to move this forward to the full Board of Commissioners meeting from May thirteen, twenty twenty one, as currently stated. And obviously, there are the conditions that have to be met from the planning commission, but I make the motion to move this forward.
Can I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Zepone. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you. The matter will move forward to the May thirteenth board meeting.
Thank you. If I may, they have good produce. If I may, this is as an aside, anyone who wants fresh produce in these days, it's good, it's a good thing. Thanks, guys. I'll meet.
All right, so we'll move on to the public safety section of the meeting this evening. We have item A, which is for us to consider approving Officer David Wiley to the rank of probationary sergeant effective May fourteenth, twenty twenty one, providing he successfully completes the remaining portions of the promotional process. And I will open the floor for any questions or comments from members of the committee. Any comments or questions? If there are none, is there a motion to move this forward?
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner. And we have a second. The matter has been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the matter will move forward. Item B is for us to consider approving installation of a stop sign as experimental on the north and south side of Elliott Avenue and Crestview Avenue. Are there comments or questions from members of the committee? No comments or questions? Does someone want to put a motion on the floor for consideration?
I I'd like to make that motion and I'd like to send it to the full board next month.
Thank you, Commissioner Myers. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Zepone. The matter has been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The matter will move forward to the full board meeting on May thirteenth. Item C is for us to consider approving advertisement of an ordinance, which is yet to be numbered, amending chapter one fifty six vehicles and traffic. Article two, traffic regulations, section fourteen, stop intersections. And article three, parking regulations, section twenty five, parking prohibited at all times. No parking between signs, no parking here to corner, parking prohibited except certain hours, no stopping or standing. And section twenty eight, special purpose parking zones to add a stop intersection on Joyce Road at Osborne Avenue. Add no parking except for Sundays on the west side of Fairview Avenue in front of sixteen seventy three Fairview and remove handicap parking signs in front of three hundred Tyson Avenue and twenty three seventeen Tag Avenue. I feel like I just read one of those disclaimers on a commercial that you have to read at a million miles an hour. And so I think we'll open this up for comments or questions from members of the committee. Okay, if there are no comments or questions, does someone wish to put a motion forward?
Make a motion that this goes to the full board meeting in May.
Thank you. It's been moved.
Thank you.
Moved and seconded. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? Hearing none, the matter will move forward to the May thirteenth board meeting. And our final agenda evening, agenda item this evening is item D. And this is to consider approving the electronic access agreement for Pennsylvania crash information tool between the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation and the Township of Abington and authorize the township manager to execute the agreement. And I will turn to the township manager.
Thank you, Vice President Hacker. And since this might be the first time I get to actually Chief Porter is is with us, I would just turn it to him.
Thank you, Board of Commissioners and Manager Man Freddie. Just on on its face value here, what this does, this allows the police department to access PennDOT's crash reporting information to give us more timely and accurate information of all PennDOT crashes within our region.
And it's a necessary, it's a necessary agreement in order to be able to utilize this tool that PennDOT requires, correct?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Thank you, Deputy Chief Porter. Are there questions or comments from members of the committee? Commissioner Carswell.
All right, now I gotta figure out how to unraise my hand. Sorry, it took me a second there.
That's all.
Is this the data that that our traffic safety team taps into when, you know, a resident or commissioner brings forward an area of concern, whether it's, you know, just the example of the Elliott Avenue and Crest Avenue where you're looking at data to say, is this, is this an area where we're having problems?
Yes, this is a part of the overall comprehensive picture of everything. It's it's really a unique opportunity that we can access this data much earlier than before. Typically, you have to wait until Pennsylvania compiles the data, publishes the data and then puts that out and makes that available to the public. This gives the police department specific access to some of this data, which will help us formulate responses to problems and issues and develop response plans as needed in a more timely manner.
Wonderful. Well, I'm very much in support of that. Thank you.
And thank you, Commissioner Carswell. Are there other comments or questions from members of the committee? Hearing none, does someone wish to make a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Which I think we have to just clarify, the motion would be to move this forward to the May board meeting.
That's correct.
Thank you, Commissioner Zepone. And who was the second, so we have it for record?
That was me, Commissioner Rothman.
Thank you, Commissioner Rothman. The matter has been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? Hearing none, the matter will move forward to the May thirteenth board meeting. And that, colleagues, brings us to the end of our official agenda for this evening. And I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved. Thank you all.
Good night, all.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone. Take care. Bye bye.
Hey, everyone, this is John Spiegelman, Commissioner of Ward eleven and President of the Board of Commissioners of Abington Township. As you can probably tell, I'm coming to you today not from the real township building boardroom, but via Zoom. We all know Zoom too well. It's kind of become the emblematic medium of our lives for over a year now during this pandemic calamity. And Zoom is the way we've been conducting our board meetings for over a year as well. Hopefully, we've we found a way to make Zoom a mechanism for bringing us a little closer together rather than just a symbol of our our separation, our social distancing. As folks know, again, we have been doing our board meetings remotely. We really have been working hard, my colleagues and I, to make sure that we get the people's work, the township business done, keep life moving forward. And, you know, I think we've done the best job we can. But it's true that we've lost a little something of the human touch, not having our in person meetings. That's actually what this video today is about. This is the first of what we're calling Commissioner PSAs or Public Service Announcements. It's a means by which individual commissioners can record videos to communicate with folks about things going on in their ward, other issues happening in the township, or really just anything that's on our minds. Just try to reestablish that connection, some of which has been lost over the last year. So this is the first video, just kind of introducing the concept. You'll you'll hear from some of my other colleagues and subsequent videos. And hopefully, it's something you'll you'll enjoy. If there's something you'd like to see one or more of us cover as topics in these videos, please reach out to us and let us know. All right, take care, stay safe, be well and keep on keeping on.
Hi, everyone, this is Drew Rothman, Commissioner of Ward three. I wanted to provide some brief updates regarding Alworth Park. First, the current hours are eight AM until eight PM. We will shift from eight AM until ten PM, beginning on Monday, April twenty sixth. Additionally, if you're walking through the park and you come down towards the kid pool, you will see a new structure there from volunteers at Little Free Library. There are going to be books inside there. You can take one out and enjoy it while at the park or take it with you and return it at a later date. This is just another feature as we continue to make the park a more welcoming location for everybody. If you have any questions about the park or anything else, please feel free to email or call me. Thank you very much and stay safe.
This is to my residents in Arnsley, Ward nine. Just to let everybody know, I want to touch on first the progress on the Edge Hill Tyson project that's going on. We're pretty much up to par on the work that's being done at the present time. The work will continue through the summer. There is issues that have to be addressed on Edge Hill Road currently. And I'm kind of out there a couple of times a week to meet with residents and see what their issues are. So I'm constantly dealing with PennDOT on a daily basis to find out what problems they're encountering on the project. And just to reassure my residents that I'm doing everything in my power to keep pushing PennDOT, keep this project moving. And I also want to remind my residents that, once again, I've said this for quite a few years. This is a state project, PennDOT control. The township, the only involvement we had with some years ago, the township, we had to put up X amount of dollars for the engineering study to get the project started. That was our only involvement. Once again, this is a PennDOT state controlled project. I know there's
I know there's residents that want this, that, and the other changed. It has to come through PennDOT, not me. I'm there doing whatever I can for my residents to work with PennDOT and address the many needs that my residents are calling about. But once again, this is a state controlled project, not a township project. Now, they're going to give us a year after the project's completed. A punch list will be started by PennDOT. Contract will have to address those issues and make repairs, upgrades or whatever necessary, whatever falls in the guidelines of the punch list. And then I would estimate about a year after that, it'll come before us whether we want to take control of both Edge Hill and Tyson. I'm kind of in favor of that. This way we can get things done when we want. If issues arise on Edge Hill Tyson, I don't have to go through PennDOT to get things done like I've done for years. So that's coming somewhere down the road. So I may ask, can everybody please be patient with the work? It's an active construction site. And the work that's going on is normal for an active construction site. Any issues that you have, please contact me And one other thing I would remind my residents, we're trying to get the, my organization, the Artsley Community Association up and running again for the year 2021. So many of our events were canceled last year because of the pandemic. We're hoping by May, middle to the end of May, we can get our organization to get back involved in the community events such as the Bag Bingo, the RZ Family Day, the Santa Claus Parade, the Santa Claus Breakfast, Tree Lighting Ceremony, our 9/11 event. This year will be held on September 10th. It's a Friday night at 6 o'clock at the VFW. Already trying to get that up and running. So be patient, keep an eye on our RZ Community Association Facebook page or my Facebook page, Commissioners Zappone Facebook page. And that's where all the information will be coming forward. So be patient. Again, we are working on getting our organization up and running. And also, we're also here to address the needs of any resident that's, you know, may have an issue. That's what I found at this organization. That's what it's all about. Helping our neighbors and residents in Artsley. So that's about all I have at the present time. And once again, if anybody needs any questions answered about Edge Hill and Tyson, give me a call at 215-887-0224. And please be safe out there. And any resident that's dealing with the workers on Edge of Tyson, they're instructed to make sure they have their masks on and the residents as well. Thank you very much.